May we start without a quorum? I would assume.
There are presentations, if you...
Might as well. I'm okay with it. Yeah. Let's start. I'm okay with starting. Let's start. The countdown. Give me the final countdown, yeah.
Can I start maybe real quick?
Take your time. Jimmy John's is so simple but so good. So good. Very exquisite food taste. Yes, it is. That and chilies and Chick-fil-A. That's, you know... Cheddars, yep. Yeah, that's another one. Remember Sweet Tomatoes? Every day I go to the Brandon one where it used to be and I lay a red rose there. I miss Sweet Tomatoes, so... Yeah. I love Sweet Tomatoes. I love Sweet Tomatoes.
They still have it open?
Hey, David, yep. So no, not in Tampa area, but there is one in Houston. I was in Houston for some of my legal practice and they had one there. I know. I passed by it. I was like, I went like this. I was like, Sweet Tomatoes. They say we don't.
We just can't vote without a quorum.
Can we do the countdown and Gordon begin?
Yeah, we can.
Let's do it.
Alrighty. Good evening, everybody. Our meeting will be live in three, two, one.
Okay. Welcome to the September 22nd, 2025, second and final public hearing to consider the adoption of the fiscal year 2026 final millage rate and fiscal year 2026 final annual budget. The meeting format is hybrid. Please silence all phones for the duration of the meeting. I call this public hearing to order. Please look at the screens of your divisive where an image of the flag is displayed and join me in the pledge of allegiance and stand if you're able to do so.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Chair Viera.
Here.
Director Wolsel indicated he would be absent. Director Williams indicated she would be absent. Director Cameron Cepeda.
Present.
Director Clendenon.
Here.
Director Hartfield.
Present.
Director Hobbs indicated he would be absent. Director King indicated he would be absent. Director Knight.
Here.
Director Mac Elpatrick.
Here.
Director Mechanic.
I hear.
Director Miller. Director Myers.
Here.
Director Niebrich. Director Schisler.
Here.
You do not have a quorum.
Okay, and we need one more. Okay. So we'll, we'll...
One more in person.
Yes, ma'am. So what we'll do is we'll proceed with presentations and all that good stuff and if the board's comfortable with it, I certainly am, and whoever is not here will certainly have to be comfortable with that. So let's go ahead and begin, if I may. We are at the Hillsborough Transit Authority, 1201 E7th Avenue, Tampa, Florida, 33605, and the rest of the board members are participating via Communication Media Technology. I have two introduction and welcome statements this afternoon. First is my colleague on Tampa City Council, Councilman Alan Clendenon, who's been appointed to the HART Board of Directors representing our city of Tampa. Councilman Clendenon brings decades of public service and operational experience to the HART Board. He served for 32 years with the Federal Aviation Administration as an air traffic control specialist, gaining extensive labor management experience in a safety-critical environment. He is chairman of the Tampa City Council, representing District One, which is citywide, and serves on the Hillsborough Transportation Planning Organization, TPO, Tampa Bay Planning Region Council, Tampa Sports Authority, and Tampa Bay Committee on Foreign Relations with prior service on the City of Tampa Civil Service Board. He is also a member of the karaoke group, the Tampacrats. And so welcome Councilman Clendenon to the Board of Directors. City Council does karaoke, so that's what it's all about. So welcome, Councilman Clendenon. Would you like to say anything, sir?
One, I just want to let you know that I'm thankful that you're there because I'm now only the second worst singer on the...
And how?
On the group. And I'm happy to be of service on HART. I look forward to working with you all.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate you. So welcome, Board Member Clendenon. And secondly, I'd like to introduce Mr. Jeff Gibson, who is now one more member of the HART Council team from the law firm of Gray Robinson. Mr. Gibson represents several government clients, including the Hillsborough County School Board, and he's very familiar with public government issues, processes, procedures. So, Mr. Gibson, welcome, and you are recognized, sir, to give a statement concerning public input. So, welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the welcome. As the chair indicated, this is a public hearing for the fiscal year 2026 final millage rate and fiscal year 2026 final annual budget. And any comments made at this hearing should be strictly limited to those issues as described in the two resolutions the chair will describe. Thank you. These are documents available online and at the meeting that summarizes the fiscal year 2026 final millage rate and fiscal year 2026 final annual budget. These documents include the agenda for tonight's public hearing. The first action will be the approval of the minutes from the September 8th, 2025 fiscal year 2026 tentative millage rate and fiscal year 2026 tentative annual budget public hearing. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
We do not yet have a quorum to take that action.
Oh, that's right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I forgot too, so, yeah.
Chair, can I be acknowledged? Can I be acknowledged?
Yes, sir. Are you finished, sir?
I am.
For now?
Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead, sir.
So I think we're gonna have, excuse me for my interruption, but I think we're gonna have a consult with General Counsel. What is actual quorum? Because whatever the board, you know, the pleasure of the board, but if we go through these, this hearing right today, do we, will we have to do it again because we don't have quorum? So I wanted to, I wanted to get clarification if the quorum is eight or nine.
Nine. We need nine members here.
And if I may inquire, I don't want to find out who the ninth person is who we're expecting, but are they coming?
No, they're not coming. So, yeah, so...
We don't call the chair? He's a voting, he votes.
We can't hold the hearing.
Correct. Right.
We have nine, right?
Yeah.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. No, he's not a member. Yeah, I did the same thing. Yeah. So...
Who we can call is come to this meeting.
If, I know this is weird. Can anybody come to the meeting? Yes, sir. Board Member Hartfield.
Question for counsel. How do we define quorum? Is it 50 plus one or is it nine? Is it a defined number or is it a percentage?
It's 50 plus one. And so for purposes of today, we need 8.5, and since we can't have 8.5, it's, we need nine members here.
So...
In order to have a vote.
Here's what I would suggest we do is, is that we take a five-minute break. Y'all can make your phone calls because I don't want to embarrass anybody because I've, we've all missed meetings and I, I'd hate to be at a family event and be publicly called out. So how about we take a five or 10-minute recess where we can enjoy Jimmy John's and then we can make calls?
Yeah.
How about that? Okay? We'll be back. Thank you.
Chair, we can continue our meeting in three, two, one.
Welcome back everyone and a special thank you to Board Member Mechanic for, and I mean it because we've all appeared virtual, I know I have, and this was just an unfortunate set of circumstances, so thank you Board Member Mechanic for coming here, because again, we've all appeared live and just bad luck for you man, so there you go. Okay, so let us begin here. There are documents available online and at the meeting that summarizes the fiscal year 2026 final millage rate and fiscal year 26 final annual budget. These documents include the agenda for tonight's public hearing. The first action will be the approval of the minutes from the September 8th, 2025 fiscal year 2026 tentative millage rate and fiscal year 26 tentative annual budget. Public hearing, is there a motion to approve? Second, motion by Board Member Knight, seconded by Board Member Schistler. Roll call please.
Chair Viera?
Yes.
Director Schistler?
Yes.
Director Cameron Sepeda?
Yes.
Director Clendenin?
Yes.
Director Hartfield?
Yes.
Director Knight?
Yes.
Director McElpatrick?
Yes.
Director Mechanic?
Yes.
Director Myers?
Yes.
Director Niebrich?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, thank you.
Thank you very much. Board, we will consider the adoption of the following resolutions. Resolution R2025-09-39, a resolution of the Hillsborough Transit Authority of Hillsborough County, Florida, adopting the final levying of the ad valorem taxes, adopting the final fiscal year 2026 millage rate of .5000, which is more than a rollback rate of .478, I'm sorry, .4768 mils by 4.87 percent, and providing an effective date. And Resolution R2025-09-40, a resolution of the Hillsborough Transit Authority of Hillsborough County, Florida, adopting the final fiscal year 2026 annual budget of $200,608,124 and providing an effective date. The public hearing will be conducted as follows, and I will go through what it would be, but I'll make a proposal. Hart staff will or would present their fiscal year 26 final millage rate. Hart staff would present an overview of the fiscal year 26 final annual budget. The board will then open the floor for citizen comments regarding only the final millage rate and/or the budget. Comments are limited to three minutes. After citizen comments, the board will then take action to move forward any approval of any necessary changes. Two resolutions will be presented to the board for approval, then the board will approve the required resolutions, adopting the FY 2026 final millage rate, first and then adopting the fiscal year 26 final annual budget in that order. As to the presentation board, since we, out of respect for people's time and different things like that, I would suggest, and please, if anybody would like to hear this, let me know that we waive the presentation on the annual budget and the millage rate. Are there any objections to that?
I make a motion to waive it.
Yes, sir. Okay, we have a motion by Board Member Mechanic, seconded by Board Member Schistler, and before, to our attorney Gibson, there's no legal complications with that, I would assume, correct? Okay, thank you, sir. So roll call please.
Chair Viera?
Yes.
Director Schistler?
Yes.
Director Cameron Sepeda?
Yes.
Director Clendenin?
Yes.
Director Hartfield?
Yes.
Director Knight?
Yes.
Director McElpatrick?
Yes.
Director Mechanic?
Yes.
Director Myers?
Yes.
Director Niebrich?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, thank you.
Thank you, Board, thank you, sir. Okay, so are there any questions to staff before we proceed for votes? Any questions at all from the board, including anybody virtual? Okay. We will now take public comments regarding the fiscal year 2026 final millage rate and fiscal year 2026 final annual budget. For those who wish to speak, I ask that you please limit your comments to three minutes. Do we have anyone signed up? Do we have anyone here for public comment? Okay, so we will proceed then. I will open the floor for board discussion. If there are any recommended changes to the final millage rate or the budget, if there aren't any, I will ask to move for approval of any changes. Are there any proposed changes to the budget?
I'll move approval of the item.
Okay, so let's do this here, and I'm sorry, before Mr. Mechanic, I need to read something here. Public comment is closed. We will now vote on the fiscal year 2026 final millage rate. After the vote on the final millage rate, we will vote on the fiscal year 2026 annual budget. The resolutions will now be read, and I'll entertain the motion after I read this, if I may. Motion or strike that resolution, R2025-09-39, a resolution of Hillsborough Transit Authority of Hillsborough County, Florida, adopting the final levying of ad valorem taxes, adopting the final fiscal year 2026 millage rate of .5000, which is more than a rollback rate of .4768 mils by 4.87 percent, providing for an effective date. And Resolution 2025-09-40, a resolution of Hillsborough Transit Authority of Hillsborough County, Florida, adopting the final fiscal year 2026 annual budget of $200,608,124 and providing for an effective date. State statutes require that we approve the fiscal year 2026 final millage rate before we approve the fiscal year 2026 final annual budget. Accordingly, we vote on each resolution separately, so accordingly, have a vote by, a motion by Board Member Mechanic, seconded by Board Member Myers, to adopt the fiscal year 2026 millage rate, and let us have a roll call on that, please.
Chair Viera?
Yes.
Director Schistler?
Yes.
Director Cameron Sepeda?
Yes.
Director Clendenin?
And for the record, I reviewed the recording of the first hearing and have reviewed all the documents and I'm ready to vote, and yes.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Director Hartfield?
Yes.
Director Knight?
Yes.
Director McElpatrick?
Yes.
Director Mechanic?
Yes.
Director Myers?
Yes.
Director Niebrich?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Board. Is there a motion to adopt or amend the fiscal year 26 final annual budget?
Ms. Jackson, I'm on.
Oh, I apologize. How would you like to vote, ma'am?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there a motion to adopt or amend the fiscal year 2026 final annual budget?
Sub moved.
Motion by Board Member Schistler, second, I believe it was, first by Board Member Mechanic. Roll call please.
Chair Viera?
Yes.
Director Schistler?
Yes.
Director Cameron Sepeda?
Yes.
Director Clendenin?
Yes.
Director Hartfield?
Yes.
Director Knight?
Yes.
Director McElpatrick?
Yes.
Director Mechanic?
Yes.
Director Myers?
Yes.
Director Niebrich?
Yes.
Director Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Board. The public hearing was held in compliance with Florida statutes today, September 22nd, 2025, to consider the fiscal year 2026 final millage rate and a fiscal year 2026 final annual budget for Hillsborough Transit Authority. Before we conclude the public hearing, I wanted to thank everybody for being here today and all the staff's hard work, and when is our next board meeting?
November.
Okay, so I did want to say this, which is, I'd spoken to our CEO Drainville on this, which is, I wanted to, I think it's proper, for us to give an honor of some sort for a transit advocate champion award to Councilwoman Lynn Hurtak for her work in Route One, and I wanted to disclose that to the board. If y'all have any thoughts on it, you can either say so now or speak to the CEO Drainville about it and so forth, but I just thought that would be something, given her remarkable work on that issue. I like to recognize that, so, since we're not going to meet until then. So, any discussions or anything to be said regarding the vote, or lovely Jimmy John sandwiches?
Yeah, just, so the next board meeting is November, but you do have the special hearing in October.
Yes, we do.
Yes.
Absolutely, yep. So, thank you very much, Mr. Drainville. So that concludes the public hearing. Thank you, everyone, and have a good one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sir.